Okay, good evening, everyone. Let everybody settle down here a little bit. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Manal, Chairman of the Board of Finance. The purpose for us being here this evening is the second of two public hearings with respect to the operating budgets as well as the capital budget. This year, with the new charter, changes that are in the charter, the Board of Finance has two public hearings. We do not have a town meeting. We then move things on to a referendum. So since this is the second of two public hearings, the one we had two weeks ago, we had full-blown presentations from the Board of Education and the Board of Selectment on both their operating budgets as well as their capital budgets. Given that those presentations are both being played on SCTV and they have also been available on the town website, and also for those of you who may have come inside door, there are copies of those presentations in the back of the room. If you want one, raise your hand and somebody will get those to you. Okay, so we got two down here? Okay. All right. Sue, are you going to handle that? Thank you. Okay, two here. So what we're going to do is we're going to open this up to public audience, similar to any other venue that the Board of Finance runs, would ask you to come up to the microphones. We're going to give you three minutes. We'll ask you to state your name and your address for the card, even though we may recognize you, we still want you to do that if you would. And at the close of the public hearing, after everybody's had a chance to ask questions, we also have Vivian Zidone, who's Chairman of the Board of Education. We have Bert Leclair, who's the Business Manager. Matt Curtis is here as well, Superintendent, along with Larry Glassing in first line. So if you have any questions, and they're appropriate, and they're to the merits of the subject hearings, we can take those. So after the public hearing, the Board of Finance is going to have a special meeting where we will vote on the items, both the capital and on operating, and then if we decide at that point, we'll move them on to referendum. If there are issues with any particular item, we will address those at a later time. We don't until the end of the month to take up those issues. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to open it up. I'm going to go take a seat over here, and then we'll ask you to come to the mic. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to public audience. Anita, why don't you kick it off?
Thank you very much. And thank you for having this second public hearing. I did not see the notice of the first one. In fact, I had a lot of trouble finding documents on the website. Even after I've edited the paper, I still had more trouble finding documents on the website, so I wanted to see your hand, which was very helpful. The full six-year CIP for fiscal years 14 to 19 shows the item "Center Area Charrette Infrastructure," which is funded for $540,000 in '14 and $1.3 million net by '16. In the current year, that's right now, not the one we're talking about, but the one we are operating in, "Center Area Charrette Infrastructure" is funded at the total amount of $1.85 million for the year of '14. Even though this, and I set "C" attached, to those of you who I gave copies to, the third page here is a page that I copied from the town's Simsbury website on Monday, and on Monday, it shows under fiscal year 2014, the entire $1.85 amount. This is what we anticipated proceeding for this expenditure. We believe that this, while this sheet is not in sync with the public sheet that you have that was in the form of the notice, we believe that the change was made at the very last minute, and we want you to revert that change, back to where it had been. The Simsbury Main Street partnership has worked with the Office of the First Electoral to develop the first page of implementation from the townwide charrette two years ago. We have proceeded diligently through the charrette, the public involved process, the parking audit, which was done by the EPA, Technical Assistance for Sustainable Communities, through the CIP process, which requires fitting into the overall financial plan, and applying for a Main Street investment fund grant for half a million dollars with the support of the Board of Selectment. Even though all of these public policy and other studies were carried out, the CIP was changed at the last minute to the format you see now, with the majority of the construction pushed two years out. Simsbury Main Street feels this is an unwise decision and should be reversed. The charrette process pointed to the constructions on the parking deck as a logical first implementation step. A phone call to Mr. Lee Einzweiler, the charrette team leader, confirmed this and offered his full enthusiastic support, after reaching the last page, where "B" is parking deck in Eno Hall, this is from the charrette mass. The deck is seen as crucial to achieve a level of density needed in the heart of the central business district. It would also be a demonstration to the developer community that we are serious about changing the makeup of our downtown to one which encourages pedestrian traffic and small business activity. The parking audit commissioned by the planning commission indicates on the first page that a strategic parking management approach would be necessary to realize the full potential of the recent downtown visioning and planning efforts. On page seven, the study explains its Park One's strategy, rather than the private parking approach used now. And I'll read that one paragraph. An effective transition toward a Park One's approach will need to complement the increased walkability envisioned for the town center by locating public parking options within comfortable walking distance to popular destinations. The lack of an urgent need for new public parking facilities to support the downtown economy will allow the town planner to be quite strategic in citing their Park One's investments. Initial plans to develop a structured parking facility behind Eno Hall reflect such a strategic approach by providing overflow capacity for home events, nearby restaurants, and potential infill development projects. Six strategies are listed as options from starting points for the community. The first one is emphasize the critical role that developing a shared parking, Park One's management system will play in realizing the envisioned redevelopment of downtown Simsbury. The action points and the photo leads us right to this parking deck. The capital improvement process has included an amount for implementation of charrette priorities for several years, in approximately the same amount the entire time. We have worked within the framework all along, and we are not happy to discover that we have been pushed off for two years without explanation or logic. We request that we be heard and that the former order be restored. This order becomes all the more important when one looks at the grant money we've looked to bring to the table through the Main Street Investment Fund, a sum of half a million dollars. This money would be included in the whole amount quoted in the CIP, and thus the burden of bonding the money would be less than the taxpayer. We are anticipating an answer from a PM undergrad next week. We believe the change in the CIP was done at the last minute and without the benefit of looking at the long due preparation that we have used in pursuing this project. We believe there is still time and interest to correct this mistake by funding the full amount in charrette intention.
Anita, could you just some more?
My last sentence. We ask that the Board of Finance use its powers to accomplish this large overall goal. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Or you want to come after? Okay. Mrs. Coe?
General 1226, which we drive. The reason for the poor attendance at these meetings is the attitude of our elected officials.
General, could you close him to the microphone?
I could close him to the microphone. Do you hear anything?
No, I can't.
Better.
I never thought I could connect the error. The reason for the poor attendance at these meetings is the attitude of our elected officials, that they know it's good for the taxpayer, and they have presented what they think is reasonable, differ their opinions and not consider once our elected officials have forwarded their respective budgets. However, we, the taxpayers, pay the bills, and have not only a right, but a responsibility to ask questions and have an answer. At the last meeting, my questions went unanswered in the budget as presented when forwarded. I feel the Board of Selectment budget is a political position paper with unnecessary expenditures. The charrette studies and designs are a waste of money. The HOPIT will eventually demolish the building to save money, no matter how many students, studies are paid by the taxpayers. The HOPIT's first responsibility is to the shareholders, not to Simsbury taxpayers. This study is a charade, not a charrette, at taxpayers' expense. The budget reflects money through Greenware's Main Street partnership in college, which should not be paid by the taxpayers. Main Street partnership is a nonprofit organization that should be supported by the Chamber of Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. The Greenware's ways are a nonprofit organization and should be self-supporting, along with the health expenditures. How can the town find money for all these frivolous expenditures and can't find money to settle the police highway and dispatcher union contracts? The senior center could be incorporated into the library as it evolves into a community center and greatly reduce cost. None of these expenditures should be supported by the taxpayers. The car wash at a cost of $275,500 is the initial cost for the erection of the facility. What is the operating cost associated with the continued use of the car wash? The Board of Finance has increased the general plant expenditures by adding $100,000 for CNR expenditures. We should not be increasing our expenditures, but reducing our expenditures. Debt should be reduced, not increased, in an economy that is faltering. Our brand list diminishes, so should our expenditures. Our property values have diminished on average 13% and revenues a lot lower. If the town expects to encourage businesses in town, taxes are a concern to business. Simsbury has the highest taxes in the valley, and the town continues to increase taxes. Increased taxes affect property values. How can the Board of Finance support an increase in the budget when all financial indicators show a downturn in the economy? I cannot support a budget that does not reflect the economic downturn. Budget expenditures should not give special consideration to large lobbying groups at the expense of the majority, speaking majority of the taxpayers, I will vote no on the budget as presented. The Board of Education, with projections of a decrease of 112 students in the 2013 school year, 2013 fourth day school year, the Board of Education should reduce administrative costs by eliminating supporting staff. Many of the programs generated by the Board of Education are supported by grants. It appears that the Chinese program has no revenue to support this program. Is Chinese going to be eliminated due to no financial support? Over $3 million in grants are allocated to programs and staff that are offline. What plan is in effect whether grants are reduced or eliminated? How many grants are time-sensitive? Do the grants cover the cost of sending a selected few students to magnet and charter schools? What is the cost? Correct manages the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center for students with emotional problems in 125th Lateral Lane. This is a regional school. Are the Simsbury students full-time? How many Simsbury students attend? How much money is allocated for their education? How many students are home-schooled in Simsbury? What is the cost to the taxpayer? Are they counted in the reduction of 112 U.S. students this year? How many students are tutored at home due to various medical issues? In order to reduce costs, could they be educated through the electronic media at home with specialized programs and eliminate tutors? Why should the taxpayers pay for alternative education for the students when Simsbury's schools are considered above average? There is $300,000 allocated for textbooks. Why can't the information in the textbooks be delivered electronically to the students at a much low cost? Students should not have to carry heavy backpacks when most content is delivered electronically. The Board of Education budget increase of 1.89% is not reflective of decreased enrollment, reduced property values, and reduced revenues. I cannot support an increase in the Board of Education budget as presented, and I will vote no. Thank you for listening. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Which career president Simsbury may be passionate, or of course, you will have a setup office of a stationship. Anita, I spoke to you previously about the parking garage, and just to give you a little perspective on it, what is the parking space we're in for our businesses? There are 46 businesses, residents, mixed-use office, retail, restaurant, in blocks to the east, to the west, to the north of Eno Hall. And we went to three of them, and we said to them, "What's your average ticket when a customer comes in?" We had a range of $27 to $38 to $42. How many customers a day do you get? We had an average of 189. So we said, "So if we took two customers a day, half another day in the store, that would be 16 people a day, that would equal to, you know, $608, $672, $432 of parking space we have paid for a day." And we said, "Let's assume that you're all closed one day, one day a week. In the course of a year, you'd have 313 days that you'd be in business, each of the ten would be pulled, are open seven days a week." And we looked at it, and what does each parking space mean to these various people? We had a review of it. It means $190,000 of revenue to that. A second vehicle, $210,000 of revenue on parking space. The third vehicle was a restaurant, and it's $135,000 of revenue on parking space. So the value of the space, whether it's on the street or in a garage, it has to be there. On the garage aspect, there are two projects in downtown Simsbury that I know of that developers have looked at building parking decks per the new charrette. As they went up and gave cost of it, they'd been back getting numbers that seemed that they were high. And also, that is for Eno Hall, that number seems to be coming in approximately $9,000 per space lower. We'd like to be able to prove to some of these developers that a parking garage in or that could be built downtown economically and make it work for our downtown businesses. Thank you.
Dr. Manal, I'm Dr. Dr. Andrew Manal Pro. Not here to speak in favor or opposition to these budgets. I thought I'd ask some questions. I've watched the previous presentation to Simsbury TV, and I thought they were well-done, but not transparent. I'll go into that. 2008, beginning of the recession, Superintendent Manal stated, "I will do everything in my power to avoid layoffs of her staff, teachers, administrators." I would like to ask the present superintendent of schools this question. Do you agree with all her policies, programs that she instituted in the funding of these programs? And if not, which would you have done differently?
Dr. Manal, if you've got a list of questions, why don't we get them all out?
Okay. The second question is for you. If I gave you $300,000, would you give me $375,000 every year forever?
That's an easy one. But go ahead.
You did that.
Okay, go ahead.
If you divided the last 32 years into eight-year segments, eight-year periods, what would be the greatest increase in per pupil cost versus inflation in those eight-year periods before? And the last question is, I saw a recent Simsbury TV program. The superintendent of schools says that the pupil costs are $315, less than the mean of $169, or we're saving $1.3 billion per enrollment. And I don't believe he meant saying that justifies his budget, and it sounded like that. Because another town continues with us, has $800 less per pupil cost. If you multiply that by 45, 44, 50 students, that's $3.5 million. I'd like him to say, "Do you justify your budget on the basis that your mean per pupil cost is $250 less than the mean, that justifies your budget?" Or do you say that there is no relationship to that fact? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Manal. Any of that you want to tackle, couples?
Sure.
Or you want to do those after? Okay, why don't we get, give everybody a chance to speak, and then talk about.
I had occasion just this evening, by the way, I totally agree with Anita, finding when a meeting was, being able to download the information from the dashboard is a serious discrepancy, you know? Being able to find out when the meeting was. It just, I went to like three different places, and finally Google searched "a meeting today, Board of Finance," and it says that. The second thing that happened today was, as many of you know, I used to be very active in a large real estate company in town. And today, I was talking to some Simsbury managers on a totally different topic than of Board of Finance. And I heard without question from these managers here of the largest real estate companies in Simsbury, that people are being turned away because our school budget is too high. So, sorry, Lydia, that's what they say out there. They'll go, they'll buy a name because they can get just to study in education and get more house, plus taxes. So, you know, it affects all of them. But the main reason I came here tonight about those two of the doctors is, there's a $204,000 expenditure listed here on design of the Simsbury Senior Community Center. We haven't decided where it will be. Why do we think of moving it out of town when we had a center charrette that said, "Let's get people in the center of town," is beyond me. The survey that was done, has anybody who ever took a statistics course will say, the way that survey was skewed, the percentages of people that wanted it out of the town center. They divided all the other percentages to, "Do you want it in Eno without renovation? Do you want it in Eno with renovations? Do you want it in the center of town? Maybe at another location." If you add an old center vote, it far outweighed any outside of the center senior center. Why they're even copying the deck, a design expenditure of $200,000 plus, when we hadn't decided where it's going to be or what it's going to look like, seems it's horse before the, not the horse before the truck, the carts before the horse. So I'd like you to take a look at that. It's a minor expenditure when you're talking $1 million, but every $200 makes it better.
My name is Anos Abadi. I live in Tennessee, where I drive here in Simsbury. As a tax-paying senior, I question the need during these uncertain economic times for a new senior center. We have a wonderful senior center in the newly renovated Eno Memorial Hall in the center of Simsbury, near where, according to the charrette, retail and residential development will occur. Eno has three floors, an elevator for anyone to reach each of these floors, an entry ramp for those who cannot enter the building via stairs, lots of miscellaneous rooms which provide space for whatever programs the seniors need. I have questions. Have any studies been done regarding the usage of the present facilities? Has the present usage outgrown the facility space, or is there miscellaneous unused space which could be reconfigured to meet any unmet needs? Have the seniors younger than me, seniors in their 70s and 60s, and Simsbury residents in their 40s and 50s had an opportunity to express their thoughts as to their needs in their future for a facility to be used in their senior years? What a horrible error could be made if we do not address the concerns of all future uses of a senior facility? Let's not put the cart before the horse, just to have a new building needing new staffing, additional upkeep costs, while we already have a wonderful building which will be in the center of our downtown community as we see the results of the center plan coming into fruition. I'm sure additional changes can be made to the Eno area, such as Anita had indicated tonight with a new parking garage, to meet any senior concerns or needs, and will meet whatever codes are necessary to accommodate the senior population. I believe Eno is what we should maintain for a senior center. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak?
My name is David Manal Pro. I live at 13 Fox Street Road, west Simsbury. I became a resident of the town when we had the great flood in 1955. I came to work from inside Bigfoot. And as we all know, the old ones, the young ones, the world is so different. I'd like to just give you a little anecdote on the difference. When the great flood was here, I came in the next day on a Monday to work. You couldn't get into Simsbury, you had to go up through Grant, because you couldn't get across the bridges and stuff. The population of the town then was 4,800, 5,200 people. Later on, switching up 50 years, SCTV invited people that had been in the town during the great flood to come and give their roundness of what had happened. And this was, they had cat questions that they asked you. And they wanted to know what impressed me the most, because there weren't too many people that had been present here for that flood. And I said, "Well, the thing I think that stuck with me the most was never, from the day I came in, till we got the flood cleaned up and inside Bigfoot, did I ever hear the word "government" mentioned." There was no state government, they never even came out here. The governor didn't know what Simsbury was. I don't think he knows now, to be honest. But all of this went on, and, you know, people were pretty self-sufficient. Now, did people die? Yeah, they had two that were killed in Simsbury in that flood, I believe. Anyway, that's just some ruminations on it. I'm sorry I couldn't come to some of your other meetings, but I have two, two questions. And I assume we'll have a little dialogue when these questions are being answered. So, if they have to come back up and have a count appointment, is that correct? Or is this, we're going to say what we want and we'll sit down and go home?
Uh, it depends on what your questions are, David.
Well, I got some good ones.
Fire away. You usually do.
Thank you, thank you. Well, my first question is a little historical because it was raised last year, you and I both talked a little bit about it. But I, I still don't understand why we go to a referendum, and I'm thinking now particularly of the school board, and we have a referendum on the total amount of money that we're authorized from the school board to spend. As came out last year, and I think most of you people remember, the, the question was the grants, the three million dollars in grants, it's like Grant taking Richmond, because, you know, back to the flood game, there were no grants. It was, everyone was just paying the taxes. But the handling, and I think from what Mary Ann told me, the grants that have been put forth for the school, I'm not talking to EDC or ESC or, not, not the big windfall that comes in. We're a rich, rich community, we send a lot of money down to Hartford, to, to the federal government, and they give us a few crumbs back if we're lucky. But the, the three million dollars, that is not accounted for in the referendum question on yes or no for the school board. Am I making my point clear?
Yes, you are, yep.
Okay, I want to know why not. It seems to me when we go to the ballot, we authorize an expenditure of X number of dollars. With good likelihood, we expect that possibly some of that money won't be spent. And we know that that's, that doesn't happen too often. But the question is, we should know what is the maximum amount the school board is going to spend. And if they need more money, they got to come back to you guys and it's got to get reauthorized, new addition. And I don't know why we can't have this thing completely transparent, but it has to be so opaque that nobody understands, as you remember last year when we had the town meeting, it was a little astrid. Well, my eyes aren't as good as they were when I first came to town, so I could hardly see the asterisk. But in reference, this red aspect, I, I don't think we should have to go through that focus, focus. That's my main reason for coming. My second reason is the Hartford Insurance Building. Now, we all know what's going on there, and I was on the Economic Development Commission in the late seventies when the town sold that land to Hartford. And for some people, it may be new. At that point in time, we had to have a town meeting authorize the sale of the land that's down in the hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy acres to Hartford. So, we had a, this was before this building was built, we had a, a town meeting, and it was packed. And we couldn't get everybody in to vote, so people were outside, they huddled in the auditorium. It was written up the next day by the New York Times with a half-page section that it was the Houston book rectors against the lot, the largest town meeting that they had in the record of where people actually went and voted, and the town voted to approve it. I might say I think that Hartford's been an excellent, excellent taxpayer and it provided a lot of good things for the town. My concern on this issue now, however, is we cannot get too close because we don't have any authority at all. Now, I understand this is glass going to set up a committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, and certain people that have liked to participate in that committee to handle a, a meeting with the Hartford people and jointly hire a broker, and so on, et cetera. The town was owed three, thirty thousand dollars, I think, for our share of that. My question, which I asked at the Chamber of Congress meeting and at the last EDC meeting, was, I need to watch one. My, my question was-
David, if you could just summarize, that'd be great. I think, I think we know what the question is regarding this.
Okay, what's the question?
I think the question is, are we, uh, in an arrangement with the Hartford to hire a broker? And have we signed a contract with them?
No, that's not the question.
Okay. David, if you could just summarize.
That's right. We're about fifty of you.
Right, we'll get to that, okay.
My, my question is, do we have any letter of understanding with the Hartford on this joint venture that we're going to get involved in something? Because, you know, back in the days of the Indians, you didn't have lawyers, but we all are now, you got to have lawyers. So, there has to be something in my mind on record of our relationship with the Hartford on this particular issue.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I'll see you eventually again.
Same for that. Okay, thanks, David. Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, what we're going to do at this point then is I'm going to give it, uh, an opportunity to the folks from the Board of Education and Board of Selectmen to answer questions that have come up. And I'm going to actually try to take them like order of the speaker, okay? So, the first was concerning the, the project, the center area charrette infrastructure.
Good evening, and thank, thank you to everybody who came tonight, thank you to everyone who spoke. I really appreciate you taking the time and sharing your thoughts with us. I do want to acknowledge that, um, our staff is here this evening, and I want to thank them as well. Also want to acknowledge that this is the last town meeting for Sue Bullock, our librarian, who will be retiring in a few years. There are rumors about Rich, but we're not going to tell them. First, kind of regarding the charrette, uh, first want to thank Simsbury Main Street Partnership for all that they do for the town and collaboration with the town, partnership we have. Um, it is actually the result of their hard work, Rich and Rich Davis and their board, that they actually applied for the parking deck that we're talking about this evening. And for those who don't know, uh, what, what the plan is, is, uh, there is a need, it was identified in this study of the downtown, to build a parking deck up at, at Eno. Obviously, there's parking issues there, there's parking issues with the use of Eno, there's parking issues with the neighboring, like, businesses and development, and, uh, we actually have submitted a grant application for that project. Uh, when the Board of Selectmen met several meetings, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their hard work in renewing the budget. Uh, we had several workshops and the capital plan was discussed in detail, given the concerns of the town, the Hartford, and the possibility of one point two million dollars in revenue that the Hartford brings in. Um, you know, what, what was going to happen with Eno, what was going to happen with the senior center study, and we'll talk about that in a second. Um, the board felt that, well, we want to continue planning with the parking deck and working toward a resolution that we, there were too many unknowns at this point. There was an unknown about the grant status, uh, we didn't know if we're going to get the grant yet. There's an unknown about the future of Eno, whether, uh, a public hearing that will be scheduled shortly for the senior center would result in a decision to expand Eno, uh, leave Eno the way it is, and look at two alternative sites. So, um, the board felt in good conscience that we would reduce the amount requested this year, wait for the grant funding, and move forward with that project in subsequent years. So, that is why the number had been reduced, um, and that's why it's presented in a based-in forum tonight. Um, if I can just-
Sure.
-continue with the senior center because it is related. Um, one of the difficulties we have in planning for the town is that if we come to a town meeting once a year, we have to plan for the following year. Um, but we have to anticipate some things that, um, may or may not come true. Now, first is the grant, whether the state of Connecticut will give us the grant for the parking deck. Uh, the second is, um, our process for the senior center. We did do a study for the future needs of the senior center. Um, we had, and Rich Switzke's here to give us more details, but we had identified three sites. One is expansion of Eno Hall. The second is to build out a performing arts center and use that in the center of town. And the third is to locate a senior center at Stratton Brook and Brushy Hill Road. Um, the Public Building Committee just submitted their report to the Board of Selectmen, so the Board of Selectmen has received that recommendation. We now will hold public hearings, we'll have plenty of time for input. Um, I qualify as a senior since I hit the age that you qualify. So, I know we've, we've got a broad range of folks that were asking for input. Um, we put funding in the budget for senior center design because in order to bring back a recommendation for the public to vote on, we would have to have more detail to find out what the cost would be. Uh, we had a lot of discussion with the Board of Selectmen because if we did not move forward with the project, we obviously would not spend the money. However, if, as a result of that public hearing, which will be held in May and June, if the town did opt to move forward with improvements to Eno or opt in to use another site, we would have to design, uh, that project to bring it back to the voters to vote on. So, while we don't want to get ahead of ourselves by not, uh, funding just in design funds, we wouldn't be able to bring back a recommendation for the public to vote on or the public to comment on. And so, that's why you see, um, that funding. The amount that we're requesting was the same amount whether we were to renovate Eno Hall or opt, the other two options. So, um, even though we don't know what the decision is, we do know that the town will need those design funds if we move forward. If the public and our residents decide they don't want to move forward or leave Eno the way it is, we obviously would not spend the money. So, I know it's, um, not the usual way we do things, we usually bring in a project that's ready to go. Uh, but because the timing of the budget vote is such that we will not know the answer to that question until after the referendum, we have to wait another year to come back for the design money, which means that any changes to Eno or any improvements could not be done, uh, for two to three years. So, the timing is tricky, and that's why it's been important to see. Uh, but the comments are all good because there's not been a public comment period yet to allow people to come out and tell us what you want to see happen to Eno, and we'll give you plenty of opportunity to do that. Should I just finish the town question?
I will, okay, of course.
Um, so that answers the charrette questions and the, uh, senior center questions. And Rich Switzke can give you more details on the senior center if you like. There was a comment about the truck wash that is in the capital budget. Uh, this is a project that, um, the town, the Board of Selectmen has actually postponed. We're not, um, with all that the town's needs, we're not excited about building a truck wash. Um, the problem is, is we have to wash our trucks. If you've seen the number of, uh, emergency disasters we've had, five major storms in the last two years, and the size of the trucks that we use, the plow trucks that we use, um, you know that you can't take those trucks for a regular car wash. They have to be washed, they have to, uh, remove the chemicals and the salt that we're now, chemical salt that we're now using, which corrodes not only the underbody of the trucks, but also the bed of, of the trucks where we keep, uh, the chemicals. Uh, that has to be washed down after every storm, has to be cleaned after every storm. Um, the DEEP has very strict, um, environmental regulations as to where the water goes once you wash the truck and wash the saw off those trucks. Uh, we have been identified as not complying with that requirement because of, we're using an old system, we're using the old, uh, truck wash where we go in and just, uh, we're used to use sand and washing. That was fine when we used sand, but now we, uh, have to comply with the DEEP regulation. So, the truck wash that is in the capital budget, has been in our budget, has been postponed for as long as we can, and, um, we really need to move forward with that program. And I need to, um, take care of our infrastructure, our equipment, but also comply with DEEP regulations. So, I have to answer any questions on there as well. Uh, the upgrade cost would not be any different than what they currently are. We are washing the trucks, um, and, uh, we, we would just have to, uh, build the infrastructure. Um, the Hartford study, I do want to spend, um, some time on this. Um, the Hartford Insurance Company, as Mr. Yelborey said, has been a good corporate partner, has provided jobs to our residents, has, um, provided, uh, tax revenue for our town all these years, has been good, uh, corporate sponsors. Uh, that building, that they, they've made certain corporate decisions which they are certainly entitled to make for the benefit of the shareholders, and as a town of Simsbury, we have to respect that, even though we may not agree with it. Uh, they have a, uh, structure, uh, for, on the market, which is six hundred thousand square feet. They're going to be needing to market that. A hundred and seventy-two acres of property that they own, significant impact on the town of one point two million a year in revenue, as I said. Uh, the change in any future development on that site have massive impact on the town of Simsbury. A hundred and seventy-two acres, uh, near homes, and the gateway for our community, significant amount of revenue, major, major impact on our community. Uh, the Hartford can do whatever they want with their property, as long as they meet the town regulations and town codes, and we have to respect that. Uh, we have reached out to them and have been in constant discussions with them since March when they announced that they were, uh, making corporate decisions. They can, um, take the building down, as someone has mentioned. There are no state regulations prohibiting that, there are no state laws, uh, preventing them from doing that. Uh, we've reached out to Hartford and, um, they have expressed the willingness to work with us and work with the town and involve our residents, and we're very grateful for that opportunity. Uh, the Board of Selectmen established a, uh, subcommittee made up of, um, members of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of, uh, Land Use Boards, Economic Development Commission to, um, meet with the Hartford on a manifable basis and come up with a way, uh, to involve the public. The town of Simsbury is not entering into any relationship to hire a broker. The Hartford is hiring a broker themselves, it's their choice, it's their money, the town is spending no money, um, hiring a broker. Uh, the Hartford has allowed the town of Simsbury and the representatives of the, uh, the subcommittee to observe the selection of a broker. Uh, we're very grateful for that opportunity, but again, uh, we have no, uh, legal relationship with that decision. We have no financial relationship with that decision. That is completely a decision of the Hartford, by the Hartford, for the Hartford, with participation, again, of town officials, and we're grateful for that opportunity. What the town has done, however, is during, uh, our budget process, not knowing what the Hartford was going to do, um, and not knowing whether the town was going to have any opportunity to comment on Hartford's plans, we did appropriate thirty thousand dollars of town funds to be used for our own purposes, for the town's purposes, to hire our own consultants to evaluate and to review any, uh, future proposals that the Hartford puts forward. Uh, we also, uh, identified a town master plan process that we thought would be helpful. We thought that Hartford, since they have six hundred thousand square foot building, a hundred and seventy-two acres of land, we thought it was in the town's best interest to do a master plan of that parcel, of that project, and work with the town so that, uh, the public has an opportunity to comment, so that town officials have an opportunity to comment. And that is, um, we, we took that idea to the Hartford, and they have agreed to fund, uh, that project. Uh, cost, total cost was a hundred and fifty thousand. The town had said, "We have already budgeted thirty thousand," and, uh, Har- Hartford said, I'm sorry, they said, the cost is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and the town said, "We have thirty thousand budget of our own funds for our own purposes" that we would, um, allocate toward that project, but Hartford would fund the remainder of that plan. Um, we are in the process right now, uh, the Board of Selectmen has endorsed that plan. Uh, we're in the process now of selecting a consultant of that the Hartford will fund, and the town and the Hartford will have a contract with regard to those funds to make sure that the town doesn't spend more than what we already allocated. I have to answer.
Mary, I think you got all of them, but one, if you could just, uh, Rich, you asked a question about parking spaces and the relevance of the deck downtown, maybe that was tied in.
Yeah, that's, um, again, the reduction of the charrette funds, which includes the parking garage piece. Uh, the Board of Selectmen is very supportive of the parking deck, but again, because of the unknown about the grant and the timing of how it fits in with, um, the, any senior center future study, and the fact that there have to be some participation by the businesses, which has yet to be determined, we felt that we would postpone that until we get more information on that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Paul? Could Mary answer my-
Paul, could Mary answer my question?
I thought she did.
No, my question was, do you have anything in writing to the Hartford on the subject?
We will have something in writing before the budget, before, we can't spend any money until July 1st.
No, I'm not waiting.
And we'll have something in writing before we enter into a contract with Hartford. We don't need a contract with the broker because the Town of Simsberry has no involvement with the broker.
No. May I?
Dave, just one more, I don't want to go back and forth.
Well, this is perhaps one of the biggest issues the town is facing, Paul, and I think people deserve to know what's going on.
So you answered the question.
There's nothing in writing.
We'll have it in writing. There's nothing to put in writing, we have nothing yet.
There's a ton to put in writing, Mary.
I'll have to speak with you.
Look, it's like a Trojan horse if you're not careful.
I don't know what you want in writing, there's nothing.
I want to know what the relationship is. What does the Hartford think about this? What do they want in writing?
Who knows? We are working on it.
Okay. Dave, she said they're working on a contract and I think she gave a rather complete answer as far as.
I know, I'm 82 and I can't wait that long.
It won't be another 50 years. Okay. Matt, you want to, there's a number of.
Hi Curtis, for those of you who don't know, Matt Curtis is the superintendent of schools and also a home three-point shooter. A long time ago. Thank you. John, I'll try to address some of your questions first, there was a lot there, I was trying to keep up with it. I think thematically, one thing you were talking about is something we spoke about before, and that is thinking outside the box, looking at some of these cost centers, be it electronic textbooks, be it costs incurred through special education, or home bout tutoring, which is becoming more prevalent. We are doing some of that through online programs. One is called Virtual High School, another is called Play-Doh, which Aaron Murray is currently as a committee researching right now. We hope to make some significant progress in flexible offerings to students who have unique circumstances. So I just wanted to address that piece. Couple other notes on that. One more question you had, John, was about expenditures relative to magnet school tuitions. We do have enough funding in the grant to cover that, about $250,000, that's been pretty stable for the past couple of years. Overall, our projections for grant funding are stable, they're down about $50,000, you know, in the realm of 1.3, 1 million dollars overall. The Chinese grant, we had funded a 0.5 position through a Chinese grant last year at this time when we moved forward with the grant information and talked about it publicly, we did not have that Chinese grant, it didn't anticipate it, so we had planned to fund that position from the operating budget. We did receive that grant, applied for it again, we're not sure where it stands, it's why we didn't put it there this time around at this point in time.
How many homeschools do they have?
I don't know exactly how many we have, I could get that information for you, but I don't know how many Aaron can tell us of homeschool children.
Homeschool in.
In Simsberry, they don't have any.
Probably, I'd say around 30, 33 kids from.
About 30, 33.
30, 33, but people don't have to tell us that they're homeschooling.
They're not required.
They're not required.
If they're at school, they're twins, aren't they?
No. You're talking homeschool.
Homeschool, their parent sits in front of the computer with the kid, their books that are given to them, and they test a full program of.
So if a parent chooses to homeschool their child, they don't need the approval before they do that, nor do they need to tell us that that is wrong?
Yes.
We send out, you know.
They don't have to, they don't have to tell us.
So it's a unique situation. Couple of questions, one about during the budget presentation, did I see a certain slide as a specific justification to the budget or did I need to imply that? I didn't, that was not my intent. That slide, which compared our per pupil cost against the state per pupil cost and then our DIRG or our reference group per pupil cost, it was a section in my budget presentation, as you'll remember, where I talked about return on investment and talked about it's an important data point to look at, to be aware of, and that we do at a lower than average cost get a higher than average return. So if I made that, made you feel that way a little bit, that certainly wasn't my intent. The question about all policies and procedures that the former superintendent, Dr. Holman, had, you know, I'm coming in as the new leadership and developing my leadership team, we're in the process of looking at all programs, constantly working on program reviews, reporting out to our Board of Ed. I don't think it's feasible that when new leadership transitions in, they will agree with absolutely everything that was done with the former leadership, but I'm not in a position tonight to evaluate program by program where we are with that. One topic that did come up, Mr. Valboni, was the grants and the transparency around the grants. This is something that very early on in my tenure, probably in the first couple of months, we had pretty significant conversations with the Board of Finance, with our Board of Education on, and a step towards that level of transparency, I think people were looking for it as a way we now report out differently in Burke McClair, our business manager.
I saw these in the back, this has details.
We do gross out now differently than we have in the past, what those total expenditures look like. That's not something that we formally demonstrated in public. We also break down how all those grant fundings, what they support in terms of certified staffing, exactly to where the position is. So I think we made some significant progress in that area. We had talked earlier about kind of that ballot question and that thought process of what that would look like. You know, grants, some restricted, some federal, the timing of when we know when those grant commitments will come to us doesn't match up with the timing of appropriations for the town, July 1st when we know we will receive that funding. So you know, you could look at that piece, we spoke ways, Paul, feel free to weigh in on this based on what we said, but if you commit to the overall expenditure in the grant doesn't, doesn't hit the town as well as on the funding.
Right, I'll just weigh in on that. We did, last year, there was a lot of discussion around this particular issue because we didn't record grants and their expenditures in our annual reports, in both our federal and our state, they were, they were in there. The issue came up about more transparency with respect to the grants, which roughly equalled 3.1, 3.2 million dollars. And asked the Board of Education to develop more reports with respect to the costs that those grants offset, as well as what they were, specifically what they were. As Burke referred to, they are in the operating budget now on page eight, so they clearly describe both the salaries that they support on with the employee benefits, the outside services, tuition and transportation. The reason that, and we can talk about this a little bit later, but primarily the feeling was that since these are supported by outside grants and they're restricted grants for the most part, and you have to spend them for what they are intended for, that there was no reason to go to the voters and ask for appropriation on those particular things. With the survey of the towns, an informal survey, but also what we've been able to gather, the only town that actually requires that on the town is Avon. There actually, there might be more than a town. Avon had to do that last year more because there was, how do I dumbfoundedly say this? They weren't recording it in a way that Simsberry records things, so therefore they needed to record these grants a little bit differently. No other community, to our knowledge, asked for these grants to go out onto their, either through town meeting or on a referendum. So that's why we were satisfied with the amount of information that was provided by the Board of Education and the fact that we did have probably one in particular in a second meeting where we specifically asked for a lot of information from Burke and from the superintendent regarding those grants. I don't know if other members want to weigh in on this subject, but I know one that was pretty, pretty well thought out with respect to the board. Do you guys want to comment on that?
Isn't the issue that we don't want to go to the referendum with the gross amount and not have, run the risk of not having that grant come in? And we've approved it, they can spend it, we don't receive it, isn't that part of the issue?
That's what I heard. Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes, I had to add that point that the taxpayers, residents of the town, being asked to vote on appropriations and grant funding and appropriations does not impact the tax base. I think that the Waldo positions probably a good example, where taxpayers voted on expenditure for the open space, but they didn't vote on the grant. It does not impact taxes, so I don't know if it would require a town charter, I don't know if it's even, you know, legally permissible under some law, but again, it's not, it doesn't impact the voters and we have a lot of discussion about that. Similar.
Right. I think one key point, and Dave, I think this is important, if these expenditures are put into the budget, okay, and for some reason these grants don't come in, okay, then we will have discussions with the Board of Education around either can you cut something out of your budget or do we just absorb that? I will say, most of these are grants that have been placed for a long time, and there's probably maybe, quick count, it's probably as well over 13 of these grants.
Two main, two main drivers.
There's two, right, there's two main, one which is the IDA Part B and then the special education placement and excess cost, one's for $975,000, one's for $750,000. Those are the key main drivers here, along with the open choice money, sorry, I missed one here. So the chance that those would totally go away, I think, is relatively small. There is a risk, and we have to recognize that when we move these budgets, but the feeling is that the risk is not that great in some of these others, which are small, $33,000, $60,000, $28,000, those could be absorbed in the budget.
But Paul, that's the very reason you feel quite secure that those big number grants are going to come in, because you've got a long history with it, right?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's my argument. Put it in and show it. If it doesn't, if it doesn't come, you guys can reverse it.
I think we've had that discussion, we'll follow up on that discussion a little bit later. Respect your opinion on it, it's not something that we feel needs to be done.
It's not just my opinion, I like to ask this question, is that a unanimous opinion of the board, are you going to vote on it?
I don't think we need to vote on it, we may have some discussion on it. We did go through it last year and we decided not to do it. I don't believe that it was unanimous, but I think five members of the board probably felt that way. So with that, Dave, we've talked this thing through, that we're blue in the face over the last year, so this isn't something where we're taking it lightly. And we've asked the Board of Ed to do a lot of different things with respect to their reporting, they've done what we've asked them to do, and personally, I feel comfortable with going to the voters with the, with the appropriation as it's requested.
Well, I guess I would just add, the new way that we report out, provide information on request allows us to, from that transparency standpoint, start our discussion a bunch earlier if there are questions or concerns about it.
The question, I'd like to comment, which is that I think what you're asking for could actually have the opposite of that of what you're looking for, which is that if, in fact, the taxpayers were asked to vote on an appropriation that was hired that reflected all the spending that included grant funding, if the grants did not come to fruition, the town has now appropriated the money for the entire amount, including amounts that are covered by the grants. And so I don't think that's what you would be looking for, I think as Paul said, if grants do not come through, we're looking for an education to make those difficult decisions about what programs they will and will not fund, because the money is not there. If you vote a budget today and incorporate the money, it's there.
I'll ask you a question next year again.
Okay, all right, thanks. Matt?
I think that's everything I had.
Okay. Okay, I think you got them all. There was one question for me from Dr. Rinaldi regarding, if he gave me $300,000, would I give you $375,000 back?
Every year forever.
Every year forever. And the answer to that would probably be no.
Oh, you hit it.
Okay, however, let me, let me just say, you gave me $300,000 today and I could pay it back to you and invest it any way I wanted to over the course of a number of years, and I could take into consideration in that present value of money, and I could get a return that would more than pay you that $300,000 back or that $375, I maintain it. But the question is, where do you invest in? How do you spend it?
$28,000.
What kind of return? Now, the thing with respect to a Board of Education budget, it's very difficult to determine how your investment is going to pay off. I know there was, I believe last night, there was a ceremony at the high school, there's approximately 425,000, 420 seniors who were graduating, I think approximately 110 of those, maybe a little bit more, became members of the National Honor Society. That's probably a pretty good investment.
You could have funded kindergarten without doing that.
I'm not going to revisit the kindergarten issue, that was enough last year.
That's how you did it.
So.
It actually wasn't our decision.
It wasn't our decision?
No.
It should have been your decision.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. With that, I want to thank everybody for their time. We're going to close this public hearing, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to have the special meeting of the Board of Finance to deal with all of these issues that we have here. Thank you, everybody. We're going to, we're going to call this meeting to order. I'd ask the people who are here in the theater, I know this isn't exactly the best form for having this type of meeting, I just want, you know, since there are people here, people will be watching from SCTV, we do have meetings, John here, Burke McClair, Matt Curtis and Mary Glassman and Tom Cook as well. So we're going to go through some of these things, we've got a number of items on our agenda, so I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Finance to order. First thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of our March 27 regular meeting. I'll take a motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, do I have any changes, corrections, additions, revisions? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. Next item is the April 9 minutes for the public hearing on capital and operating budgets. I'll take a motion.
Second.
Second. All those, well, for any changes? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, next item on our agenda is the discussion of possible action proposed 2013, 2014 capital improvement plan. We've had a lot of discussion around this, there's a number of motions that we have with respect to, to the items that are before us for the 2013, 2014 plan. Marion Harris had repaired the capital improvement program summary that you guys all have, along with some options that we had asked for, or that I guess maybe I had asked for, which were moving a couple of projects to various, various out years. And one of those things was to move the center area charrette infrastructure out to 2015 along with the senior community center construction, excuse me, senior community center design of $204,000 out to 2015. Option two was to move those two projects out to 2015, as well as move the Henry James middle school renovation out to 2016. So I just wanted you to see that. I also want to draw your attention to the projected mill rate, which is, which is part of the package that was handed out. We always go through the projected mill rate, we'll have more discussion around that, but it, if we approve everything as we've done tonight, along with the operating budgets and capital as originally proposed, it would change our mill rate from 31.7. seven to thirty-seven point two nine. And that is a change of eighteen point eight seven percent, or a change in mills of five point two nine. Now, a couple of factors there before everybody falls off their chair. This is after reevaluation. So, the average home has gone down, and businesses on the grand is approximately a thirteen point two or thirteen percent. So, there is an offset with respect to that. So, those are the items that are before us. We need to just go through those, so I wanted to lay that out to the members before we started having discussion on the capital. I'll open it up to members if they want to just have a conversation on capital, or we can just run down the list and take these one at a time. I also, by the way, one additional thing. I did talk to Bond Counsel, as well as Bob E. President of our town attorney, and they said that we do not need to read these into the minutes for each one. We can waive the reading of it so long as the court understands which one we're talking about and the dollar amount. I'll open it up. Mr. Wood, though?
We had talked at the earlier meeting, I don't know if this is what they had had in discussion about the seven percent guideline and favorable just ways in which we want to do the arsefuls and all that. So, we'll just wait to hear it and mediate with the guideline. I don't know where it stands on it, but it would be probably to some points I made earlier. We'll be back.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on Jeff's?
Well, that certainly was my question near the end of our last meeting, was whether we should take the opportunity of doing stuff now and afford ourselves a lower interest rate. As sort of a rhetorical question, maybe you should perhaps give us some of your thinking as to why you want to move several of these projects that you just expounded on.
Sure, sure. I think that's...
Future years, because that essentially defeats the purpose that we're talking about.
My rationale for wanting to do that was related really to what Mary had talked about previously, earlier at the public hearing, was the unknowns. The unknown of the Hartford, which is our largest taxpayer. The unknown with respect to state aid. We got some information today that was helpful, good for Simsbury, but we don't know. The governor talked about eliminating the car tax. That appears to be dead at the moment, but we never know whether that might also rear its ugly head and come up with a statewide mill rate for car tax, which in that case would probably have a significant impact on Simsbury. The other thing is, I'm not real comfortable with where we are as far as finalizing what we should be doing with the senior center, whether we should be keeping it in Eno, or whether we should be putting it somewhere else, say, the Forum Arts Center. So, that was my rationale for saying, okay, you know, I balance that with understanding that the interest rates are low at home, okay? And that we should certainly try to take advantage of that as much as we can. But I'm just feeling really uncomfortable from a financial perspective, voting up on major capital projects. I'm okay with making these things, and there's a lot of maintenance things here that we need to do. There's roofs, there's carpeting, there's some other things that we need to do. I support the truck wash for the very reason it's a way to maintain your assets. And the trucks are very expensive. We've got to maintain those. The other things, we're all in the car. So, that was my question. Peter?
I have no desire to deviate from that policy, chasing only interest rates. I think we've had low interest rates for the last few years, and it could continue and whatnot. But I don't want to make long-term decisions just chasing the interest rates. I'm going to get approved because once you go up to expenditure, target them back, and once you violate the policy, we target it back. As we found when we bonded for the high school, we used to pay cash for projects and not finance everyone, and then to fit in the high school people, our policy, we were going to bonding. So, now we're bonding everything to stay at seven percent. So, I'm of the note that I'd like to spend less, not more. But looking at these projects that we have presented, we have some that we put off last year because it didn't fit in. So, we own the projects. They all seem reasonable. There are a lot of repair, maintenance-type projects, the roofs and boilers, car wash.
Truck wash.
Truck wash. If it makes sense. Maybe that's what I called it last year. It appears the work, obviously, I guess the sewer falling into the river is a major concern. That's a big dollar amount, and that's coming out of being a big for our reserves of the sewer fund. But you have to do these things, otherwise we'll have a major catastrophe or something natural. You know, we are asking, we are dipping into the reserves to pay for some of these projects. And Marion did an analysis there. I talked to her about it. I don't think we're coming out. So, I think we can spend the money, not put backwards on our reserves. That's, you know, obviously, Bond Rating Agency has commented that if we're able to add to reserves every year, you know, we're kind of at a level where we want to maybe stabilize it. But I think it's still proven to do this. We're not jeopardizing the financing of the town. My opinion, you know, because we have run decent year revenue wise, and the taxes are coming in. We still have that four hundred thousand plus from the storm last year that we didn't recognize yet. So, let's say there's a million, four, million, five projected that are coming to the surplus. We have allocated somewhere now, maybe what, two fifty or something like that. So, you know, we have to get some more money right for capital on recurring. We still move some money around from one surplus spot to a different one. You know, spending it, we're moving it somewhere. You know, we told all the boards we could do capital on recurring. I hope we're moving whatever we have to do to make that fund whole, so we can do it. You know, I think that's proven management, because it allows them to maintain a spending level for those type of projects. Some of these big items that maybe you attempted to bond for, I think we've got some more work to do to find out exactly what we're going to do there. I mean, I was...
Everybody agree with that?
You know, I think there's some more work to find out some of the costs. I mean, one of the gentlemen at Spel talked about parking spaces, but also there's some concern that maybe the costs will go higher than we think on that garage. You know, because developers think it's more, they tend to...
Pretty good. And the grant as well. I've had one this year, and so many areas have had money. I think some of them are more likely to be a question.
You know, I see what's here. In my mind, I've been pretty accurate with what was presented. It appears all reasonable. It's very sound. I know there's a couple things that made a little confusion out. I think they talked about the center design, and also on the area charrette. Now, that five forty, I believe, were perdue improvements to the street scale, right?
Yeah, that's actually a twenty-year project. It's sidewalk replacement. That's why the board is likely to check out the parking component, but allow the funding up, so that Rich would be able to work, as he has been with local businesses, to work on finishing the sidewalks and lighting and the infrastructure. So, that's why we reduced that.
So, we already had some downed on there. We did that.
That's the money. That's not studying.
And just to clarify, it's our dollar.
That's our dollar.
Right. And also, to be clear, that's what was presented in your budget book and what was presented here.
Yes.
And was split up into, I don't, I know it even had something that said on the town website, it wasn't split up in 2016.
No, I think, I think a couple things. We put the original documents on and presented by the board of selection, and then put on the new documents as they were changed. So, there's a trail. So, I don't know which documents we looked at, but the...
I just want everybody to be clear that what you're telling us is what we saw two weeks ago.
It was what was ultimately held.
Correct.
Yes. Change, you can tell, you know, look at the old document, that's correct. I do, before, at some point in the conversation, just want Rich to talk about the timeframe of postponing the senior center design, because that will postpone the construction, which will crash right into some of the other projects. So, just want to have Rich comment on that, both of the two items, before you make your decision. Also, just question of what happens when you move those. The board of selection worked very hard to honor the seven percent debt level, and we went below that by reducing some of our projects. But I'm not sure adding those projects on next year, that may not be within the seven percent debt level. And so, the question is now, what we do now? We met this year, by postponing the project, there's a question. And then we also have to postpone the senior center another year, because we wouldn't have the design ready to go. So, at some point, we don't want to, Rich will just figure it out.
Why don't we, what I'd like to do is maybe start taking these one at a time now? Bart, or do you want to say?
Yeah, I have just a couple things.
Sure. You want to turn that mic around so that...
That'd be good.
Great.
First, just procedurally, I know that Mrs. Glassman shared with us at the last meeting that one of these projects would be going to the voters, and I know that I studied the charter and questioned what are...
We have an answer for you on that.
So...
I have an answer for you on that.
Okay. I wanted to make sure procedurally we do it. And the other thing that I'd just like to find out, I still have not, and I know I have a couple calls into you, to see if we can get some more information on the long-term road program before we had to make the call on this. I guess I am concerned, I'm concerned that we bonded all four roads today. I'd love to see us put that back in our annual budget, so that we can spend every year and keep our roads up without having to do big chunks every few years and then pay debt on top of them. So, I'd love to see us go back to the old days where we spent a million dollars a year and took it from the really old budgets, every year, year after year, on roads. And then we got into some trouble and stopped spending it, so we had this catch-up that I know.
That's not true.
We had to do... Well, the numbers that, the numbers that I have from some old days, they could look like that is true. So, it's something I would like to have more understanding of, and, you know, you could be completely right. I would give it something different than you are, obviously. But I'd like to get my arms better around the long-term helping of the roads, and that we're appropriately doing the right amount. And if there's catch-up required to get us back to a flat amount, so we don't have to bond two and a half billion every couple years and pay interest on it, that we could, you know, do something, get caught up, and then have a more level amount annually, I'd like to see us think about whether or not that makes sense on the roads.
Okay. All right. Jeff, go ahead.
Just a quick one I was going to say, and I know it's not dispositive, it's very fluid way down, stakeout, but I can only look at the total budget, I think, has probably moved a hundred eighty thousand dollars here a year for the roads, doesn't it? I remember that earlier.
Yes. That is correct. There's an additional hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's been proposed by the government and by the appropriations committee to date.
Yeah, there's the extra, what Mr. Wood tells referring to, for those who are watching, is the most of the money which provides for roads. We've got something today, which said that that money had gone up by an additional hundred eighty thousand dollars to the town of Simsbury, which is about doubling what we had previously in last year. Bart, I want to just get onto your question on the sewers. I had a long conversation with Judith Wang and Bob Council on the five percent up today, and the issue became, the new charter says that anything over two percent has to go to referendum. Anything above one percent goes to the board of selection. So, it sort of is, she felt, is a little unclear on that, one to two percent, that that needed to go to referendum, okay? What, Bob didn't feel that way. He felt that anything over two percent still could be perused with the board finances to recommend and approve. The key point for this particular project is that it doesn't require us to bond. So, therefore, the feeling is that we don't need to send that to referendum. So, I'm glad you brought that question up this morning. It was totally appropriate. In the future, if we have projects that fall into that gap that require bonding, I think we would probably have to listen to Bond Counsel, because we have to have her approval when we want to bond. So, Mary, do you want to add over that?
Yeah, I do. I was correcting. Thank you for clarifying for the boards. When the board was selecting our budget, we were not clear if it was going to be bonded or if it was going to be a sewer response, because the board finances the right to change how they fund it. So, when we initially budgeted it, it was looking like we might bond it. So, we went to counsel, and we went to Bond Counsel, and Paul's answer, right, counsel said we didn't need to go to referendum. Bond Counsel said we could make it harder for some bonds, bond holders to question it, because in her opinion, it was a gray area. It's not clear. So, we made the decision that if we weren't bonded, anything over one percent, to be proved, we should follow Bond Counsel to advise and vote to referendum. Paul's right. You're right. If you don't bond a project and you take it out of reserves, as long as you're not impacting the bond holders and you do not have to go to referendum, so it's certainly up to the board finances how you want to fund that project. If you choose tonight to bond that project, you don't have to go to referendum. If you choose to take it out of sewer response, and I conferred with Rich, and he said, not all projects, we wouldn't be able to do that, but this project can be bonded completely out of reserve. So, if you choose to follow that option, you do not have to send it back.
But just to summarize, if it's less than one percent, the board of selection makes the decision?
And the board finances.
And the board finances. If it's between one and two, the board finances?
If it's between one and two, you don't issue bonds for the project, the board finances in vote. If you, if it's between one and two, and you issue bonds, Bond Counsel says, bond holders, purchaser wants to do that, that's what you want.
And if it's over two, it goes to the board.
Correct. So, that's kind of an unintended consequence of our charter revision, because clearly the intent of the group, which is how I was reading the charter, which is how counsel reads the charter...
Exactly.
Is to say, if it's two percent, it doesn't go.
Exactly.
And that doesn't matter whether you bonded or not. The intent was at the time, two percent.
And Bob was clear. He agreed with you, Bart. I think, provably, if we get into that situation, we should probably just send it over to referendum, and not be subject to any potential disagreements from citizens or...
Well, given the cost associated with it, maybe get a second opinion from that Bond Counsel.
Well, we could, you know, we could, assuming the charter, we could change the charter. But, you know, I don't want to shop around for Bond Counsel to get the answer.
We're not going to have that many between now and the next time we have a charter revision.
But I think, given the cost of what going to bonding is...
Well, we're not going to go to bond for any single project that's a million dollars, or that's over the...
If you're...
We always all go together.
If you're going to go to bond, we're going to bond a project because you're bonding a project. And if you bond a project, you don't have to go to referendum. You're not, I mean, they're not...
But I guess I'm wondering, is there a reason why we shouldn't look at some alternative sources of funding, bank loans, quite frankly, for smaller projects? I know the town chairman, he does this.
Oh, that's the whole conversation that you have.
That's a separate conversation.
I mean, there's a lot, you know, a lot of conversations to get you where you want to be, but that's, the net result is that we would jeopardize our bonding if we were not going to go to referendum on larger projects.
Right, right, okay.
Mary, could you clarify just before we go on on the senior center process?
Yes.
Am I correct that the board of selection has or has not gotten a recommendation from the Public Building Committee at this time?
So, and I'll ask Rich to give you details. So, we have just received the Public Building Committee recommendation, which puts forth three actions for the board of selection to now call it here now, and I outline them. One is to renovate Eno Hall, and second is to expand the Forum Arts Center, and third is to locate a new structure and pushing it up.
The next step?
The next step would be to hold a public hearing in May, and then based on that public hearing... hearing, the board will make a decision in May as to how to go forward. Either not, not to go forward, or go forward with one of those options. The problem is, emergency, that's the timeframe. We would need funds beginning July 1st, as far as the design of the projects to send to referendum. If we don't get the funding for the design in this year's budget, we'll have to wait until next year's budget.
But you're not going to move forward then, obviously, until the site's been signed?
We would, correct.
It wouldn't be used for any further study?
No, no, no. It's designed for the site.
And, and just to make sure that Anita was talking about half a million dollar grant which is that may be available for this project, or for at least the parking?
Yes.
Is there any, is there any chance that we would forfeit that grant by delaying things in any way?
We, we talked about, we don't know what the timing of letting, you know, receipt of the grant, and we don't know the timing of the use of it. So, I can't answer that question. But we didn't feel we should come in and ask for the funding when the grant was unknown because if we don't receive the grant, the board feel less likely to want to move forward with the project with no, no way of...
Clearly, your proposal is that we move forward with the $204,000.
We felt very comfortable asking for that because it was not a large amount of money that would get us, we opted not to go forward with spending money, first of all. And if we opted to go forward with one of the options in order to come up with a design to send to the voters, that fund, that amount was insane regardless of which amount. And we didn't feel we were jeopardizing any option by asking for that amount because it was insane regardless of which amount. And we didn't feel it was asking for too much because if we opted not to do anything, if we said everybody loves the senior center the way it is, we just wouldn't, we wouldn't use money, the money would never do, it's not bonds, we just wouldn't.
Yes.
Okay, one last question. We have, what, eight or so different resolutions here, right?
Correct.
These will all go separately on the, on the referendum ballot?
No.
No. These are all just for our approval, and therefore, the 2013, 2014 budget, it's not, you know, we, we have a six-year capital plan in front of us, we don't have to act on that. Really, what we're acting on tonight is just 2013 and 2014. And the first one up is the, is the stabilization of the Fargo's first street bank for $1,47,300. What I'd like to do at this point is really just start tackling these one at a time if the members have a current. Okay, all right. Who wants to make a motion on the, on the first one?
I believe, I believe that.
Second. Okay, and Leslie, you have the drafts in front of us that were the latest ones that Mary had, and Mary Ann, would you please make sure she's got those?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll go forward with that. Okay, so the first item up is $1,47,300 for the stabilization of a funding for their street bank to protect the existing interceptors with respect to the sewers. There's a whole number of things here. We can, if the members approve, we can waive the reading of this in total because the clerk has it in front of her, if that's acceptable, a motion to waive.
I would waive the reading.
Okay, so, a question? Okay, and again, we just had a discussion about this. This would not go to referendum. Mary, do you believe the board would support that as well? Because this is to recommend the appropriation by the town of Simmsbury. So, once we say it's, it's approved, it can then move forward.
Yes, and the board of selection has a special meeting in front of this to develop.
Okay.
Is Mary clear for the people watching, oh, this is not money, this is money that's in the shares?
Right, it's coming out of the sewer use fund. Rich, and you concur that the sewer use fund can, can handle this expenditure? That's right. Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is passed.
I think you are voting on the motion to waive the reading.
Oh, I thought I had done that.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for that.
All right, I'll take, sorry, thank you. Motion to waive the reading?
It's already...
All of us, five? Okay, that's what you took, okay, all right, I got it, I got it.
That just passed.
Pizzas are coming in at midnight. Okay, all right, so now, recommend the appropriation.
We have a motion to have it do.
Right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next item up is the, we approved the, the $168,000 from the general reserves for the emergency generator improvements, contemplated to Terracille School, and, let's see, building the ground services, there's $30,000 generator, $30,000 KW generator, high school, shelter, recircumtry, sort of kitchen, which we needed, Eno, there's a bunch of other things here. I will take a motion to waive the reading of this. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve this recommendation for $168,000.
Second.
Okay, further discussion with respect to this? Just one, go ahead, Bart.
I guess I think it's important that everyone knows this particular one is required for safety of the town. It was needed during our, our last challenges that we had, and we need to make sure Terracille has got emergency shelter use outside of the river. This one, I think, is something that's definitely needed.
Rich, Matt, you guys have coordinated on this as far as, so this is not only for the, the study, but it's also for the generator switch and the recircumtry as well. And that's enough sufficient funds?
What's going to happen in Terracille is the first component is going to be a study to see if that's moving back in economy, full shelter services. And assault then would proceed with generators to run those portions of the building.
Okay, so there are sufficient funds.
Do you have any reason to think that they're disqualified?
The building was not designed internally to be a shelter, so there are little bathroom and shower rooms, things of that nature. So, we definitely didn't look at it, little bit of special light, properly in terms of portable shower units, or bathroom units such as a GHR room, not channels.
So, it'd be more like a true emergency center for perhaps one night, and then, then everybody comes to the high school.
That's right, I know in vision it as being a dwelling type shelter, but they have an excellent kitchen facility, an excellent cafeteria facility, so you could get people who are a little warm up, perhaps to stay for one night in the cafeteria and bed. That study, we initially take a look at that, and then we will design and install the backup power for the building.
And it's also a question here for Eno, Paul, that's the Paul's the high school for a lot of nights, you need to be there.
Eno, the library, we're primarily looking at the king of building, the straightened down the circuit so we can bring a large portable generator and fiber for the building to keep in the building that's needed. The high school, primarily recircumoting to make sure that the shelter aspects in the school, we get all the power that we, that our work does on the generator. And at the town office, again, mainly recircumting and switching, so that interestingly enough, we could have a standby generator to run the least dispatch and be able to save. One of the things we learned in the storms was that our roof, the roof and the generators work very well, but we never had a conspirator to repair one of them for six, seven, eight days. The large generators have to be brought off the surface, so we have backup to run the essential parts of the building.
Thank you, Rich. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is the item which is, the board of finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the town of Simmsbury for general fund reserves for $107,120. This is the one for town offices, HVAC, carpeting, main meeting room updates, along with another, a number of other small improvements. The, the question that I have with respect to this is, Mary Ann, in an earlier version of this I saw, it said that it would be also eligible for bonds or notes, but I see that language has been taken out on this version, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so we're going to take cash for this out of general fund and not put it in bonding. Okay, I'll take a motion to waive the reading. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'll take a motion to approve this.
Questions?
Yes, well, let's take a motion first, and then I'll answer, is that what you had in mind?
Well, if you want to have somebody move what's here, I'd rather ask my question.
Okay, go ahead.
What's the 242 in the last line?
It's here to have the version, to have you guys.
Yeah, there was a revision.
A sweet catch.
But I thought up earlier, there's a whole bunch of them.
So, there's some diseducations.
That was on your, it was on the desk.
Yeah, we have to put a lot of things in the book.
Right, so, well, that, okay, that's why I was...
Also, I would be in obligation.
Hey, Mary, would you get a side chat to this budget in your voice? Okay. We got $10,000 for the board of finance budget, so, okay. All right, all those in favor say aye?
We don't, we don't...
Second?
I will, second.
We didn't even have a motion.
I did. We thought everyone... Okay. Okay. Jeff, Jeff made the last.
I know.
Dick seconded it. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. One other thing I'll also mention, for those of you who are in the audience or watching at home, many of these projects were pushed off last year, we're taking them up this year, so that's why there seems like there may be a lot of these, but we had pushed them off last year. Okay, next item on our agenda is the, the board of finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the town of Simmsbury from the general fund reserves for $125,000 for town, teledata infrastructure improvements, contemplated to include the fiber cable connections among the town, Eno, water pollution control facility, et cetera. Primarily, this is to improve communications. I'll take a motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, did you get those, Leslie? Okay. Rich, these were, this was something that was pushed off last year. Just again, a lot of this is relating to the fiber cable connections to make town offices, Eno, water pollution. Anything changed since last year, since that request?
No, actually, the same request.
Okay, and the board of selectmen discussed this in their, in their workshops regarding this amount of money, this is the, this is the appropriate amount?
And let me just make sure everybody listening understands, we're paying for these out of our reserves, we're not going to borrow all money and pay for them in the future years, so all of these are things we've been waiting years to have enough extra to be able to use.
Right, good point.
Times come.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, next item up is that the board of finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the town of Simmsbury from the special revenue trust fund for $117,670 for Eno Memorial Hall roof repairs, including required for chimneys, improvements to the roof, to the blue room, the DAR allows the garden revolution area, and the two flat roofs over each stairwell. I'll take a motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
Jeff, I think Jeff seconded that. Okay, quick question regarding the special revenue trust fund, so that I don't have to dig it out of the book here. We've got sufficient revenue in there to approve this. Mary Ann, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, there's two accounts, there's a special revenue fund, and then there's an Eno trust fund. Between the two accounts, there's sufficient money to cover this.
Okay, and the way this is written, it allows you to tap into both those?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next item on our agenda, or next one up, I'm sure is going to generate some discussion, and that is resolved that the board of finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the town of Simmsbury of $204,000 for design improvements to the senior slash community center. The appropriation may be spent, may be spent on design, engineering, and other consulting fees, site work, et cetera, et cetera. I'll take a motion to waive the reading, the full reading of that language.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll take a motion to address this. Okay, Mr. Askin made the motion, and who seconded that?
Jeff.
Okay. Okay, we heard a lot this evening regarding the need for this. Mary gave a very good explanation of using this, moving forward, and the timeline on it. Originally, I had reservations around this, and why we would want to do this, particularly where a site had not been approved by the board of selectmen or selected by the board of selectmen. So, I just wanted to throw it out to the members, get their thoughts on it, maybe ask Mary or Rich, follow up questions before we, before we move on with this. Jeff, you want to tackle it?
I'd like to hear more from Rich, to the details that Mary would need to know.
Rich, you want to give us a little more color on this? Sure. In May of 2010, the board assigned public building committee with the charge of doing needs assessment for senior community center and even board of hall specifically is related to the senior center operations. That assignment also included looking at other sites that would be inappropriate. The committee, what the qualification, selection process brought an architecture firm on board, and their charges were specifically to look at demographics, programming needs now and into the future based on demographics, and the space requirements that would be needed to accommodate the programs. After going through that process and having a couple of important, all the 10 public informational meetings, as well as forming a subcommittee that participated in some eight meetings as the architect did his work, and additionally, that committee visited some four facilities in the area, Agawam, Mass., Enfield, Connecticut, Love Island, and last year. They determined that the Agawam, Mass. would be a good baseline facility to evaluate what we're going to do with Simmsbury. It was determined that the mission to Eno, some other sites ought to be looked at, and in fact, the committee did look at 12 other sites, and quickly dismissed a number of those sites, and then settled on Simmsbury Library Site, International Scating Center Site, some property on the regular place, I can list a bit of our lots, Bush Hills Draft for Roadland, and the Forming Arts Center to look at in detail. When all that was said and done, primarily related to the ability for those sites to accommodate the 22,500 gross square feet that are estimated to be needed, they narrowed it down to the Eno building, renovation in addition, and rebuilt the corner of Bush and distracted the road. Another site that did stay in the running, although there was a regional charge to look at in details, the Forming Arts Center. The reason we did not look at that site in details is because there's so many users on the site. Interestingly enough, from a senior center perspective, in the professional business, there's a lot of desirable ability against...
there's a lot of desirable ability against generational goals. And certainly, the Performing Arts Center property does that with the athletic fields, the dog park, the playground, of course, the Performing Arts Center itself. However, we really need to bring all those groups together to decide if they can reasonably share that space. I mean, I was down in the other day and the whole department office filled, so we did not go into as much detail on that site. We conducted some written polls at our presentations, and we did find the vast majority of the folks prefer something in the center, either renovating Eno as is, adding or not renovating, Performing Arts Center, or some other site in town. The Bushy Hill Road Strat also had a fairly good support. We then did some detailed, extremely detailed process runs on all of those facilities, and as Mary mentioned, as relates to this design fee we're requesting, all of those sites had very close costs, so our design fees would be more accountable. Our expectation is that people will conduct additional public information meetings and presentations, and have the same set for the board of selectmen to select a site that we like to modify. The reason we want to look ahead with this design is because, as you heard tonight, there's a strong interrelationship between the senior center at Eno, senior center of the Performing Arts Center, as well as the charrette activities, and in particular, the parking lot. In order to make that decision, we really do need the sign, because the parking deck in Eno, as well as some of those other center or charrette items, can't be done without its own, or that senior center design is gone. Parking deck could certainly stand on its own on another day, but the senior center Eno would be drawing upon that decision, that would mean the Eno, the most important thing they have, the parking.
Rich, was there, I don't want to debate the issue, I think this is very good, I've got some thoughts on it, but was there any discussion in all these as to if you move the senior center out of Eno, what use it would make of Eno?
Eno would remain as a community center, as it is now, there's an awful lot of hope in peace in that building, especially in the evenings and nights, so we would leave the whole community center on there. And there's also been some discussion, interesting enough, with the Pro Bay project. Eno is kind of an interesting place, as you all know, and there once the original town offices, there's three vaults. So that's an interesting use. Also, SCPV, all these things were moved, they could expand that facility and the whole level. So there's wider range of uses. That's another reason why the design room is quite important, because if the board of selectmen decided not to go to Eno, we could perhaps revise downward the space requirements and the Eno requirements per se and on seniors. So there's a greater relationship of all the things we talked about tonight, and I think it would be important to do that design, and have us make decisions on charrette activities, uses of Eno, and define, find, and scope the design for the seniors.
All right, thank you, Rich. Comments from the members?
As everyone concerned, all of that, if you don't know yet, and we're going to borrow the money and pay for it for 10 years to do this study, you can always come back if you've got excess money funded as we have tonight, out of reserves, if something comes forward and there's a solid project and decisions have been made and the town's behind it, but I don't know that we have that, town as well yet, to spend this money, and the money is not in 2015, it's put off to 2016. Anyhow, you can start the senior center, so I just wondered why, with all the unknowns right now, whether it makes sense to borrow money to do this.
Jeff, you would quickly want to say something?
No, I, she's a little bit pressured, but I don't think, based on Rich's presentation and Mary's, or comments, I support it. If the money's not there at this point, we can't definitively identify what the current reserves are at this point, based on some data, and still waiting for some kinds of active terms about money, Mary Ann. I think more stuff needs to happen, that flexibility and discretion, too, this is really important for the seniors and for our campus, with the charrette, all the work that's been done, the way that I used to do it, it would be better as well.
Question for Mary Ann. If we didn't approve of this, but then you held your public hearings and you had a desire to move forward with it, and we took the same approach that we took with some of the other projects that are currently here, or that, you know, we took care of during the year, but we said okay to take out of reserves, I mean, 204,000 is the normal amount, would that be any more of a solution?
Quite honestly, if this is not funded and the project is pushed another year, as was mentioned, I would suggest we table the discussion in senior center.
Okay. My question was more, if you move forward, if you move forward with your public hearing that you, if you said there would be two, okay, and the board of selectmen then said, okay, we want to move forward on renovating Eno, okay, but we need 204,000 to start the design, all right, would you then be in a position to come back to the board of finance and ask for this 204,000 to be taken out of reserves?
Again, if the funding for this is not there and the project itself is moved outward, I would suggest we table it.
I don't think, I don't think you would suggest.
Well, that would be a suggestion. The project is, that was suggested.
Well, I know, I know, it's a separate question.
Right. I'm speaking to your suggestion. The problem is, we can't go after grants for the senior center until we have a design, until we have something, so it's, I don't know if I'm going to take it back to the board, I don't know how comfortable they can be with the following, we've got design money right now, let me take a look at.
We could have, we can count in front of that, upon the selection of the site by the board of selectmen, and then we can come back and we can walk together the money from reserves.
That's our reserves.
Yeah. Yeah, that would work.
I have no problem moving it tonight, because, I mean, if it's not going forward, you're not going to spend the money when that just falls away, it just gives them more flexibility. Taking out of reserves, you can do that, too, as long as the problem, it's a couple time when you need to move the project forward, once people decide what the project is, and the cost, you know, fitsman or dead policy, I have no problem moving it forward, if I work for, choose a way to pay it out of reserves. TCU has the authorization, it's flexibility, and I don't know.
Sure. Nick, what are you thinking about this?
I agree with Peter. I'll support it.
All right. I'll take a motion to, wait, do we have a motion?
Senior motion, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
How many ayes have I had? One, two, three? Okay. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
And I just want clarity, I'm not opposed to the senior center, I'm opposed to 10 years paying for a study of $200,000, we ought to be able to afford this within our operating budget and find reserves for it, so I'm opposed, we don't even have the project approved, the $5.7 million is going to go to the voters, it's not something that this board should be planning, that's painful, 10 years from now, so it's not against anything to do with this.
Okay. But we still, but before we bonded this, we still have the flexibility to take it out of reserves, correct, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay.
It is important that we realize that slightly for the needs so far canceled, this is actually for final design, so.
Final design. Once the board of selectmen decides where they want to.
Okay. From a layup perspective, to the point of interest, is that this being approved allows the possibility of buying for grants, I think, my way towards, considering that the money is not there for this time.
Right. Okay. All right. I want to move on. All those, the next item is the Board of Finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the Town of Simsbury for $257,000 for the installation of the Department of Public Works truck wash. Okay. This would be financed, it does say by bonds, so I want that to be clearly respected that. I'll take a motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of waiving it, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Take a motion to put this on the table.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion around the truck wash? Again, this was something that was pushed off last year, I think there was a very good rationale for doing it at the time, we just felt that we couldn't fit it in at the time that now that we can fit it in, and it certainly makes sense. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. As it carries. Okay. Next item on our agenda is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the Town of Simsbury of $232,000 for roof replacement at the town offices, including the flat roofs over the Board of Education offices, the vault and the catwalk. Again, this is one that would come out of using bonds. I'll take a motion to waive the full reading. $232,000 is the amount that I have.
231,130,000.
Can I, I spoke with Bond Council, and she rounded up on this one.
As I just said, our other schedule, the capital, we have 231,130,000.
Right. Yeah, this is, this is the right round, 232,000.
She came from Bond Council. She said we can't do 130, she really wants solid numbers.
We can't.
And I said she can't do that, so she asked, that's why she rounded it up to 232,000. She could have rounded it down to 231,000. She couldn't have done this.
Stop.
Okay. Did I take a motion to waive?
No. Has her stopped.
Okay. So did I take a motion to waive?
Second.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Thank you. Okay. Like I said, please, this will be in a minute then. Any further discussion around this? I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
Rich, just one question on that. How old are those roofs? I know you've said that before, I just want to clarify that.
They're old enough, but I don't know the answer.
That's a good answer.
They're all approximately 30 years old.
Okay. And they're eligible, are they eligible for any state funding, or is this all on us?
There's no loan blocking for that, there could be some small legislative programs that would put a lot of work.
Since it's covering the board event, maybe we'll give a little state bucks. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the resolved that the Board of Finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the Town of Simsbury of $850,000 for replacement of the 1968 boilers at Squadron Line School with more energy efficient gas system, improved drainage, and ventilation systems. The reason I mentioned those last two is because that is all tied together, as I understand there have been problems there. This would also be funded by the use of bonds, so I'll take a motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion with respect to this?
Second.
Okay. Let's see. I think we gave that to Jeff and seconded to to Nick.
Forty-five.
Yeah. I will also say that the company that I work for, Hartford Steam Boiler, I did ask them since the, it comes through KERMA, and we're an engineering firm to look at these boilers to make sure that we actually needed to replace them and not to just repair them and do some work. And I think our engineers spent a lot of time in school going through it, and they concluded and inferred that these boilers really need to be replaced, they were well beyond their useful item, and they were not energy efficient, and that the design really should replace two boilers with two reason, because it's more energy efficient, they have smaller units there. We've done this for a number of school systems around the United States, and felt that that was probably appropriate for all of those services as part of the team. Do you want to, about that, Bert?
Just wanted to comment, I shared with the Board of Education last night, one of the nice things that came out of that review or plan was that approximate savings is estimated, once it's, once the high efficiency gas system is moved up, currently have, was the annual savings of $167,000. So, as we saw with every name, the high efficiency gas is, we, it includes what happens when you, I guess.
My hope was that we can get away with just repairing, the service for Avon on their air conditioning system, about that they're not needing to have a new air conditioning system, they could just repair it, save about $15,000, so.
Oh, it says 1968.
Yeah, 1968.
They must be respeaking.
Yeah.
Probably using P.
I will tell you, but if any of you have ever seen the, I know all of us, those boilers that are in there, you could run them out of office space, they're huge things, many of any, under the gallons of oil, heat, oil, these new gas condensing units, Bert refers to, are just astounding, the size of this, highly efficient, they recover heat from exhaust gas, excellent.
Yeah. And the drainage, there was some water that came in about this year, there's water, and ventilation system is improved, so. Okay. There's a motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That is carried. Okay. The next one, I'm sure is going to generate some discussion as well, resolved that the Board of Finance recommends and approves the appropriation by the Town of Simsbury of 540,000 for infrastructure improvements to the town center areas defined in the charrette study. This contemplates sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, drainage, sewers, and underground utility improvements. This would also be funded by bonds in the amount of not to exceed $540,000. Take a motion to waive the reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll take a motion to put this on the table.
Second.
Okay. Then with the bar and to Peter. Rich and Mary, again, I think you gave a very excellent discussion of this. It seems like this is something that needs to be done irrespective of the senior center. And I think we had it previously in the public hearing, we were detailed review of it, that we clarified some of the issues from the beginning, but I want to put it out to the board for what their thoughts are with respect to this. Any?
I think the point that was made earlier, that all of these projects still fit within 7%, so I think from that standpoint, that satisfies me along with the other explanations around it. So, there's a motion.
Yeah, I just, I think maybe the name of it is what got this one so much discussion. It's actually part of a long-term town center project, and it's, you know, infrastructure and things to make the center better, it's not another study that we're paying for with bonding, so this is actually work that will give us value for well over the next 10 years, and it makes sense.
This was within the board's plan?
Yes. It was, had a lot of discussion with exactly what you're talking tonight about whether we needed to remove that postponement because of infrastructure and all the leverage. because of infrastructure and all the leverage.
As you know, we've done a lot of this on Pop Melo Street, the lighting, the walks, planters. In this case, as on Pop Melo, we're very closely coordinated with the building company. We're private investor, we're in buildings, we're assuming we don't want to go in there and re-lighting the walks and then have a major private investor come in and change the building and change the building services. And it also does tie in with the selection of the senior center. So, we won't see us out there on all the streets, which are primarily blocks from Phelps Lane Southern to Wilcox Street. You won't see us going to any areas where we think some private investment is going to happen, we'll coordinate it. You won't see us on Station Street until we figure out where that senior center is. So, we'll closely coordinate that so we don't miss any dollars.
Okay, good. Okay. I think I have a motion on the table for this. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed. Okay, the final thing is, and I'm going to read this in its entirety that you guys can, but this is to, when we do issue bonds, that these bonds are turned out to exceed 10 years.
Make a motion to waive the reading.
No, actually I want to read.
I know that.
This is important, okay. Resolved that the Board of Finance of the town of Simsbury recommends, one, that any bonds issued to implement various capital improvement projects recommended at this meeting be issued for a term not to exceed 10 years. I'm not going to read the next part because there weren't any that we would go for all of return. Two, that the maximum term for any bonds issued to refund any bond anticipation notes be reduced by the period of time that bond anticipation notes are outstanding in excess of two years. And three, that the town retire any such notes which are outstanding in excess of two years in an amount equal to, or at least one tenth, or it's blank, as quickful, of such notes no later than three years from the date of initial borrowing and gain no later than four years from the original date of initial bond or note borrowing. Okay, I'm going to throw that out to members just to make sure that they're comfortable with that as respects to primarily the 10 years. Okay, somebody like to make a motion as this is read?
I'm trying to accelerate. Is that the intent of it?
It's pretty very much around how you think it's.
If we can refund if the rates go lower.
This allows the refund.
This allows the refund. So that we will have call provision in any bond that we move forward. Some of our bonds in the past have not had a call feature.
I think we saved about $300,000 of our funding.
Right. Right. Take a motion?
Well, you're not likely to call any motion in the next year.
Want to share some of that?
What I just read. Or you can just say on this, but yeah. Second, Jeff, you seconded it? Okay. Peter moved it and Jeff seconded, okay. All those in favor say aye?
So, before, can I clarify something?
Discussion, okay, go ahead.
I guess I'm fine that we're issuing calls for loans, although I doubt you're going to recall and it would be getting in with your rates we've been so successful with. That it's not in our limits, but I think it's parameters around recall and this wording, you know, two years, four years. And I just, it's the first time I've seen it tonight and is this how we use this language before? Are those standard parameters?
It came from Bob Council, it came from you, like. I don't see why people had a call provision.
That's not, that was not something that the board thought we could appreciate, if I can answer that question.
Mary Ann, did Judith initiate this?
Yes.
Did she say why?
Oh, because I asked her if we could do refund and if we can follow. But this is saying bond anticipation notes and we won't be issuing bond anticipation notes, what do we say, bonds?
Mary Ann, am I correct that in the last, at least the last nine years that I remember, we've never issued callable, callable bonds, as far as I know, we don't have any out there, right?
Yes, we did, but the most recent issue was callable.
The most recent. Most recent ones.
The most recent issue we just did is callable.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed?
I can extend because I understand we don't understand it. I wish we had some time to understand.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, does anybody need to take a quick break before we go on to the capital? Okay. Alright, the next item is capital. And the way we're going to handle this is looking at the motions that are in your, on your table. These are draft motions. Does everybody have a copy of these? The operating budgets, okay, we're going to take them one at a time. Who would like to make a motion on the first one? Leslie, you have these?
Any.
Okay. Would you just read that since they're short, go ahead and read it. Whoever wants to make that motion, I'll tell you, this is on the Board Selectment Operating Budget.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2013-2014 Board of Selectment Operating Budget in the amount of $18,347,575.
Okay. Okay. Alright, any discussion around these? Actually, there was one piece to discuss. Barb, you had a question around roads, adding additional money to roads. My personal thought is that at this late date, to go ahead and add additional money to this, I think then send it back to the Board of Selectment, then it'll have to come back to the Board of Finance. So, I'm not sure that doing this at this late date would probably be the appropriate thing. I understand your issues around continuous supply of funds, but we did have a discussion around that two years ago, three years ago. We provided money for, for Tom Roy to move forward with the road projects. So, that would be my thought. Mary, you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to just comment to Barb. The Tom Roy Public Works Director is working at your request. My understanding at the meeting was that it's not, not required before the, during the public hearing. So, I think when we asked what the timeframe was, I think there was discussion about not having it done quickly immediately. So, our volume, if you wanted it for the emergency service, it provided also, I understand, was a longer term conversation. So, we will be asking the Board of Finance with a detailed plan and with the detailed funding, historic funding, answering questions. And certainly, we'll have reports of discussion about the possible funds.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Let me make sure we take it out this year.
And I think anytime, you know, we've been taking a tough look at all of these budgets and we want to make sure from a strategic standpoint that we're not letting anything slide. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Next item, who wants to make a motion regarding the Board of Education Operating Budget?
I suggest we all make a motion, the 2013-2014 Board of Finance operating budget in the amount of $64,818,615.
Discussion? Okay, I think we've beat this one to death over the last couple of months. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Who wants to make a motion on the non-public schools?
I, it's a political, we've motion to approve 2013-2014 Tom Roy School Operating Budget in the amount of $531,303,318.
Yeah, you want to have discussion on it? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who wants to tackle the debt retirement operating budget? Nick, why don't you go ahead, you haven't read it for a while. No, go ahead, Barb. Go ahead, Barb, why don't you read it?
I make a motion to approve the 2013-2014 debt retirement operating budget in the amount of $16,284,175.
All those in favor, oh, sorry, discussion? All those in favor?
Was this the second one, was it Jeff?
Yeah. That's why we have a very second of everything. I know, I know, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next one up is the Capital Library Referring Fund. Who wants to read that one?
So, question on this one, to the extent the loss of money is changing, do we have the amount of loss of money in this?
We have the amount that's in the government's budget, the original amount.
That's my question.
It hasn't changed, has it? It's approached.
It's changing. It's changing.
It hasn't been filed by the final.
Can't we just leave it blank at the amount of appropriated?
No, it's a total referendum.
So, if it changes and it goes to referendum, it's, we can't have a referendum, right?
That's the way I understand it.
That can't be right.
That doesn't make sense.
We cannot take the money because.
Well, the money will cost over a year, it just won't be incorporated into our own taxes. It's expensive.
That is a motion.
It's because of the fact that it's, they can spend it all, they need to spend it.
Here are the words. She's asking us a question. Yeah.
The governor's proposal was one in 2013, it's $60,000. The total would be appropriated, which I'm not sure of, is $6,449,148. That's an increase of $293,000 below six. At this point, that is the notion.
The number we received today was 300.
Oh, that's Tommy.
Can we make a motion to approve the Capital Library Referring Fund in the amount of $16,7101, put a period right there?
We could, just to clarify, we suggested we need the number that's more conservative and if the governor and Wes, if he has some more money, will come back for reappropriation.
So, the, so the most conservative would really be that, as Nick said, just have a period after that number. I don't remember, I don't remember making a motion previously where we've actually laid out the loss of money in any.
Yes, in the last year. And that's, that $1,167,101 includes the $183,640, the low salary person.
Fine, do we have to, do we have to include any of that?
Especially since it says to include in appropriation.
Want to make a motion to get through the Capital Library Referring Fund budget in the amount of $167,101,000?
Second? Okay, discussion?
I'm nervous we're over for the, we don't say that in the sources. So, they can spend the full amount based on our approval.
But even if they spend it, it doesn't matter because they're still going to have to pay for it out of their operating budget in the next five years.
We're only spending what we can get. And if we get more, we'll spend more.
You know, it does not.
We just don't want to tell you the numbers.
I'm more comfortable with the way they made the motion. Leslie, Leslie, you want to?
Yeah.
My second was very impressive.
It was impressive.
This is the first thing he's done.
Okay, Peter, you comfortable with that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, three more. Surry Use Operating Budget, who wants to tackle that one?
I will make a motion to approve 2013-2014 Surry Use Operating Budget in the amount of $45,455.
Second? All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. The next one is the Residential Rental Property Operating Budget. I, this doesn't go on, these don't, these don't go on the referendum.
They're special revenue funds.
Special revenue, actually, they're all lumped together, there's one, I don't know, special revenues, right?
To approve the 2013-2014 residential rental property operation budget in the amount of $45,655,000.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, final one is the Simsbury Farms Operating Budget.
Make a motion to approve the 2013-14 Simsbury Farms operating, Simsbury Farms Fund Operating Budget in the amount of $1,914,200.
Okay, discussion, who making a vote?
Jerry?
Jerry, are you making a vote?
He's stating. More, more to the point.
I thought that might be the, no, where are we really with respect to this?
I mean, I think the biggest, there's a couple things. One, I think our, we're certainly looking at our expenses coming down with the new building being online. It's going to be probably a full year before we get a handle on the utility costs and the potential decreases there. We have taken on increased administrative costs and, you know, it remains to be seen if we have limited resources to generate revenue and we're trying to optimize those. We certainly saw an upswing last year in the golf revenues, which had fallen off for the last four or five years. So, hopefully that trend continues. I think that will certainly help, help the fund as well as some of the various facilities of the farms have all saw increases last year. So, I think those are positives. I think the biggest thing is our expenses and where they go with the, you know, with the new building online.
Mr. Chairman, let's take a vote as to add to that, just go a little further with this.
Sure.
Let's, I was being a little facetious, but I'd like to go a little bit further.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that handles those. Before I get to you, Nick, on that, I have one thing. Mary Ann, and Mary, there's, there's something here that says draft Board of Finance motions. And it says pursuant to special, or section 808 of the Town Charter, the following motions were introduced with a special being in the Board of Finance, April 24, 2013. And basically, it goes through the referendum questions for the Board of Selectment Operating Budget, Board of Education Operating Budget, and the, the Surry Use Fund, residential, Simsbury Farms. Do we need to vote on these all individually or are the actions that we just took sufficient to satisfy 808?
The kind of your actions.
I would just say you could just move the referendum questions. That would be the actual question on the pair of them now. And those who are not prepared by Tom staff, they're by council.
Okay.
So, they have been, according to council, that would be that question.
Okay, so if I take a motion that says pursuant to section 808 of the Town Charter, the Board of Finance recommends the following referendum now questions. One, two, and three as outlined this evening of April 24.
Yes, I'll do the, as we consider.
And you guys all have the package?
In your packets?
Yeah, they were in the package.
And these have to be written, according to the Town Board, that was the only thing.
Okay, so these three questions actually have to be written?
The whole thing has to be written. The first one would be resolutions and then the rest. It's both the Town Board and the local council.
Okay. Do you guys have? Do you guys have this?
I hear.
That's all right, we'll share.
All right. Does anybody want to tackle reading this or do they want the chair to read it? I gotta read the whole thing. Okay. No, I gotta read the whole thing. Mary Ann, I have to, you saying, Carol said the whole thing?
Yeah. We know that has to last.
Okay. All right, well, we waved all the other stuff. I'm not, this is too important, I couldn't take any chances on it. Okay. Pursuant to section 808 of the Town Charter, the following motions were introduced with a special meaning in the Board of Finance on April 24, 2013. Be resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Be resolved that the appropriation recommended, recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of eighteen million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Be resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of sewer use fund, sewer treatment plan, residential rental properties, Simsbury Farms special programs, non-public schools, debt retirement, and capital non-recurring annual budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of twelve million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. In accordance with sections 406 Automatic Referendum and 808, the Board of Finance on the budget of the charter, the recommended operating budgets will be submitted to a referendum in the following forms. Questions for referendum valid? Shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, be approved and implemented in the amount of eighteen million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars? Question two. Shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, be approved and implemented in the amount of sixty-four million, nine hundred, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars? Question three. Shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purpose of paying the expenses of the Sewer Use Fund, Sewer Treatment Plan, residential rental properties, Simsbury Farms slash special programs, non-public schools, debt retirement, and capital non-recurring annual budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, be approved and implemented in the amount of twelve million, eight hundred and forty-seven, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars? And those are, was just read into the record for the motions for the, and also for the referendum valid? Okay. Do I have a? You seconded that discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is done. Okay. Next year, my recommendation, by the way, if we do the calendar, Mary Ann, is that this meeting starts at four.
I agree with you.
Okay. Okay. That handles all of those items. There's, there's three items here. We're supposed to establish a special revenue fund for the use of the playing fields. That was in your package. Thoughts with respect to the playing fields and why this is needed? Jerry, you want to, Mary, I mean, is this something?
Yeah, so, thank you. So the, somebody in the board's working through it and Jerry brought all of his. I want to thank Jerry for bringing this over. Here, come down here.
Come on, come on down, Jerry.
We always have a relationship with our recreational organizations. We're very lucky and we integrate all their contributions. Proceedurally, this has been where the organizations help pay, donate to the town to the expenses of maintaining the field. The way we're doing it procedurally is the show would come in and then we would send it to the organization that the town would need to pay. We've got this more here and more of, the town had control over paying the bills and collecting funds from the organizations. There's a double fund that leads to them paying bills and travel, which organizations pay for. So this is the process that we're in here, like I mentioned, all of this.
That's really, I think, Mary, summarize it very well. This is, we've been doing this since about 1991. We started all these budget cuts on our, on our park maintenance operation. And basically, it's all the community groups to contribute towards, I think what we call it, you know, extra specialized maintenance, anything beyond basically cutting the grass and keeping it as a, you know, rolling park type setting. Including anything from, you know, lime paint to irrigation cost, fertilizer, seed, and any sort of specialized maintenance. And all the groups, both adult and youth groups have, have not only contributed, but there have been a number of cases where they've contributed towards capitals, whether it be in terms of facilities, whether it be equipment. So they, we've had, the community group had an excellent working relationship. Administratively, it's going to come for some because of several, we, for example, you know, we get a, we use a lot of lime paint, you can marry a fouring fields. Look at all the, you know, the weekly lining of those fields. And, you know, if I have to invoice on my desk right now for fifty-two hundred dollars in lime paint, in the old days, we would have taken that and split it up amongst five groups, sent it out to them and say, they can check out to the paint vendor, give it back to us. We'll include it with our own and then we'll mail it in. So we're waiting for five checks to come in. We're putting in our own processing. And so it became very, very cumbersome. Of course, we're telling the groups, try and budget so much, you know, per participant, for budget purposes. And we're trying to keep track and make sure that, you know, and they are too. They, they want to make sure what they're paying is fair and in comparison with other groups as well. So that was part of it. So we want to be able to say at the end of the year, you know, here is what we have brought in, here is what we can spend, here is where it's, where it's gone to. So then, you know, we're, we're some, you know, some organizations, some activities are more labor intensive. Their fields are more, more intensive cost to maintain them. And we want to be able to say to them, you know, here's, here's where your money went. So it's, I think it's a, it's a big step forward. And it's done a lot of other communities. As I told Mary, we were among the first back twenty-some years ago that did this. It was out of necessity. We told the groups, if you want the fields maintained and initially you enjoy them, then we need your assistance. And, you know, at the time, I don't think anyone else was doing it. Now it's, it's very, very common. And these funds are, have become more common too. So that's how we got to where we are now.
Comments? Questions?
Sounds like a good idea.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Someone.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is to change, request to change the scope of special revenue fund for the paw, meadow, dog park. I just want to call on that one.
That's easy. Originally, the fund was set up for construction and park, but you're understanding that one was completed and one will go away. However, the volunteers who reached out to the dog park found that they continue to get their donations and there are some maintenance costs associated with it. So for their assistance, they've changed the purpose of the special revenue fund allowed into the scene donation and use those donations for maintenance and assist that the northern side of the special.
So we're using the existing fund?
Well, they're actually going to be getting donations. They're going to be, they're going to be getting.
Okay, so this is the creation of a?
It's the same fund, but we're allowing it to be used now for maintenance rather than just the construction. It doesn't, to go, if you thought?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
I do, I do, I do, I do, I do. For the application for the response is mine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's done. Okay. Request to amend C and R line item description for truck to approve mower attachment. Which truck are we talking about?
This is actually, just to go back, last year.
Oh, wait, Jerry, hold on. And if I can, under the C and R, okay, we have a F-150 truck. We have a three-quarter ton pickup truck, Green's mower, Rotary Rough Mower.
This is, we talked about this year.
Well, it doesn't say. Just as request to amend C and R.
Oh, this is last year. This is one that we already approved.
Okay, so it's for the current budget, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So let me do the background. Last year, we came in and we proceeded budget and understand our two trucks totaling about seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that, those were based on a book that we got from our vendor that we, we totally opened. In the meantime, we went out and we, we were going through the bidding process. We made aware of our program, who stated that if, where these trucks were available, it's primarily geared towards education and sort of, but to government. We were eligible for it, we haven't been before. So we had savings of about seventeen thousand dollars under, for those two trucks, under what we had budgeted, what we would have, if they had paid, if we've gone to bid in traditional manner. One of the things is an actor, though, one of the issues that we've been, and it was not budgeted for, but we.
Are we talking about increasing the amount of appropriation?
No. It's taken, we're asking to allow us to, we're asking you to allow us to purchase a, a boom mower attachment.
It was an attachment for the truck. It wasn't in the question, so Mary Ann won't let us spend it.
Right.
So we're asking for clarification, a request that, so that we can.
Okay. Simsbury Farms?
We're going to do appropriation.
Primarily, no, primarily it's open space, open space in park.
Okay. Is this a replacement for an existing one or is this?
No, it's not. And it's really kind of a new thing. It's kind of, kind of like really the mall in the Greenway, the malls on our open space areas. It's very similar to the roadside unit that you see the highway farm operate, you know, for six or eight months out of the year. But unfortunately, we can't rely on, I think, our land school of that. And we're taking on more, you know, the same, between the Greenway and some of the other park areas, Terriffill Park, anything that's got a roadway in and out, it's got a mall or park, we don't have equipment to take care of. So that's really how it, how it has come to the forefront, mainly in the land use.
So there's no increase in the appropriation?
No, it's just the optimization.
You said you're going to have savings here?
Yes.
Is this advice likely to help you use operating costs?
It's much more so, yeah. And I think it certainly provides better service from better, you know, particularly now that, you know, people are expecting more, they're, you know, it's a higher expectation of the mains of that, of that area. So I think it'll allow us to do, really give us some tools to do a better job with this hand saved money versus.
So did you have that savings in question? Yeah.
You're going to turn it?
You're going to turn it?
Yeah, naturally. They give that. We'll be looking for it.
Do you, are you printing that over there or? Oh, sorry, that's a little. Okay. Take a motion to approve amendment to the C and R line item, description of the truck to approve mower attachment for the fiscal year 2012, 2013. Move it. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, Jerry, since you're here, Nick, you had a question regarding Simsbury Farms?
We've been, we've been done this for a couple of years, but I sort of look at, take a sort of comprehensive look at the farm's operating budget. Once we get through the end of fiscal year and just do what we did, we should do this four or five years ago.
Like a deep dive?
Yeah.
Your timing is right, it's good because we're actually doing analysis of our open space. We'll be closing it and a lot of school acquisition and requiring more of our open space. So that's going to be, so here is something for the work, for the work requirement and to follow, what we, timing.
We've got a whole bunch of, of projects with the greens and the peas and all that kind of stuff. You could kind of have a sort of an update.
And work with the chairman.
All right, this was a special meeting and we concluded all of the business that was on the agenda. We are done. Technically, I don't need a motion to adjourn, but I'll just take that anyway. All those in favor, or make a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are done. Thank you.